Good morning. Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for September 2nd, 2014. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Haywood County, give us the ability to listen, understand, and solve the problems facing our people, bless our country, help our children to grow into successful citizens, keep our military safe, may we as leaders help our county to grow and prosper. All these things we humbly ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you. We'll move to the public comment session. If anyone present who would care to address the board. Okay. If not, then we'll move to constituent concerns. Michael?
Just appreciate everybody coming out for the Labor Day parade yesterday. A lot of people out there and it was a lot of fun and so good time.
Okay.
Let me also say I appreciate everyone coming out to the parade yesterday. And one thing that stood out in my mind is the focus of restoration of the old Reynolds School. So I believe Gladys Knight is participating. She married a local from Canton, Billy McDowell, that graduated from Pisces when I was there in seventy-six. So hopefully the community will get behind that project and restore the building. It's a great structure and it's been sitting there for a long time, so unattended. That's not good.
Certainly is worthwhile. Okay. We'll move to administrative and agency reports. We'll begin with an update on county veterans affairs. Brandon Wilson is with us from the Northbound Division of Veteran Affairs as a training officer. Welcome, Brandon.
Thank you. Chairman, Commissioners, glad to have you here today. Just want to give you a little bit of a report like I did last year, but one of the first things I want to talk about is August the 10th, there was an event held here honoring the fiftieth anniversary of the Vietnam Veterans and the Vietnam War. August 10th, 1964 was when we actually went into that combat formally. And the governor had made a proclamation that day and held honor sites that was honoring these veterans in five locations across the state. Jacksonville, Fayetteville, Charlotte, and actually Haywood County was one of those sites. It happened on a quick thing from the governor. It happened really fast and I was actually out of town at the time when it happened. And I got the phone call and it's just a really, it should make the county of Haywood and the leadership here feel really well that on such short notice, not only was the event planned, it was a successful event. We had about a hundred veterans here that was able to read the proclamation from the governor to honor them. We had a guest speaker. It was going to be outside, but of course it rained, so we brought it in here and it was a successful event. And I think it's great that y'all were able to open your doors for that event, particularly because there was only five across the state. Dale Burris stepped out, but really special thanks to Mr. Dale Burris and his staff for being here on a Sunday and not only being here and helping set up, but to open the doors up, make sure it was clean, make sure the mic system was working. So I just wanted to thank his staff and Haywood County for allowing that to happen on behalf of our agency in the state of North Carolina. Second thing I wanted to go over was August 22nd, there was a big stand down in Franklin. The VA put a stand down out there to assist homeless veterans and veterans in need across western North Carolina. At this stand down, there was 178 veterans that were, that attended there. Some of the services that were provided, of course, were they, all these veterans had breakfast and lunch provided. There was a dental clinic there and I believe Haywood County sent their dental bus up there to assist with that. Fourteen individuals got fillings and extractions done, which is at no cost. Optometry was a service that was provided. Twenty veterans received optometry care. Dr. Leroy Robertson with Haywood Optometry was there, provided those services at no cost. As a matter of fact, 12 of them are getting glasses that his business is providing at no, at no cost to these veterans. There was free haircuts. Of course, all the VA services were available, including healthcare. The Department of Defense gave away about $100,000 worth of clothing and gear to these veterans. So while that's a big deal, Haywood County represented very well at this stand down. On top of the dental clinic, you had, Haywood County DSS was there. And a special thanks to Ms. Debbie Caldwell and Stephen Allred from the Veterans Office. They were there early, they were there late, they were really integrated into the whole plan, into the whole thing. So for this to reach out to seven counties in the west and it be represented so well by Haywood County is something that you should applaud yourself and your staff on. We were very lucky to have the amount of people we had there. Moving right along, I know I'm going to forget something here. I've got it bulleted here. Moving right on, the next thing coming up is October the 23rd. Congressman Mark Meadows is doing a veteran seminar session and it's going to be held at the American Legion at Post 47 up the street. In the wake of the VA and everything that's going on with the negativity with the VA, a lot of these are starting to pop up. Some of the, some of the biggest things that happen is the backlog. You hear about veterans getting their benefits and getting them in a timely manner. What this is going to provide on the 23rd is veterans will be able to, A, access healthcare on the spot and in some instances be able to get their claims adjudicated on the spot. VA raiders from Winston-Salem will be coming here. I've talked to Mr. Ira Dove as having a backup plan. We hope they're going to bring all their technology. If they don't though, we're going to have a backup plan. Mr. Ira Dove and I have talked about that. So Haywood County again is being on the forefront and being proactive in the wake of all the things happening with the VA. We are moving very fast and it's something very proud to be a part of. A lot of, a lot of the counties across the state don't have this kind of intensity and any kind of support they have from the county administration. So I just wanted to let y'all know a little bit about what's going on with that. Once again, I'm going to give the expenditure list, just like I did last August. It doesn't seem like it's been that long ago, but it has been. It's been a year already. Last year, there was 21,106,000 dollars brought into Haywood County through disability and pension. Like I said, again, I'm going to tell you again, this is tax-free money that's brought in from the government to the citizens of Haywood County. 1,157,000 was education, 18,843,000 for medical care. That total exactly is 41,431,000 dollars worth of tax-free money from the government that comes to the citizens of Haywood County. I know that's not money that's tangible for us, but it is money that's being spent right here locally. It's being spent at the Pioneer, it's being spent at Walmart. That money is being recirculated back into this community. So your support and this administration's support of the Veterans Office and the veterans in this community does make a big difference, not only to the individual lives, but it's economic stimulus as well. So I just urge you to continue your support. Once again, I want to thank Ms. Debbie Caldwell and Stephen Allred for the job that they're doing. And I'll take any questions y'all have right now, but that's just my report for y'all.
Bill?
No, I'm just, I'm surprised at that amount of money that comes in. I'll, I'll talk to you some other time about that.
And it's up from last year and of course it's going to continue to grow. Last year was 38 million. It's went up from 38 million to 41 million, a little over three and a half million dollars from last year. So it's going to continue to grow before it plateaus due to the fact that the wars are winding down and more veterans are seeking benefits in this time. But until it plateaus, it's continued, being able to support that in an economic way is huge because that way it keeps bringing that money back into Haywood County. And more importantly, our citizens are being affected in a positive way.
Typically, when there's an extended period of peace, peacetime, then the numbers do go down as unfortunately veterans pass away.
Correct.
But recently, of course, we've had an influx of younger veterans.
Yeah, and statistically, what the DOD is looking at is we got an increase of probably about, I think it's 30% between 2007 and 2016 on the amount of veterans that are going to make North Carolina their home. So that's a huge increase, a big influx from 2007 to 2016 that North Carolina is going to have veterans returning home and making North Carolina their home, whether it be retiree or just getting out.
Yeah. Anytime we talk about this topic, I'm reminded to remember that Greatest Generation and that my father was in and many others and how they're dwindling now to such small numbers. And we need to think about them every so often, I think. Kevin?
I just appreciate the update and I'm glad that we are able to do what we need to do or, you know, for these people that have served our country. And, you know, and it enables you obviously to help and to expand services and everything. And then on top of that, just our staff because they're going the extra mile to make, to see that these things happen too.
Right. It's not just out of the Veterans Office and like I said, Mr. Burris. I mean, it's the whole, the whole community and the whole Haywood County administration has been able to support this and I think that's something to be very proud of.
And, you know, I'm just, we really support our veterans and what they do and how they protect us and everything. And so it's just a thank you for, you know, for giving us this update. And again, thanks for everybody that, in our staff and our administration that go the extra mile for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before our next item, I would like to mention, I neglected to do so earlier, there'll be a 9/11 ceremony commemorating the 2001 attacks at the World Trade Center. That'll be at the Clyde Volunteer Fire Department at 6:00 PM. I've been to that event, I think, every year and it is well worth attending if anyone care, would care to do so. Okay. The second item of administrative and agency reports, recognize Ira Dove, who has a designation to present to Robbie Inman.
Mr. Inman, would you join me, please? Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for having us here this morning. It is my privilege, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, to inform you that Mr. Inman, the Director of the Haywood County Board of Elections, has been designated as a Certified Elections Registration Administrator, which is the highest professional achievement in this field. Being a Certified Election Registration Administrator is a designation achieved only through a multi-year course of study conducted by the Election Center's Professional Education Program Staff. The completion of 12 core courses of study taught by the Masters of Public Administration Faculty at Auburn University, ranging from Ethics to Voter Registration, Elections Law, Planning Communications, Voter Participation. And it's the program is a professional elections management program that he's completed. This is the highest designation available to elections and voter officials. And there are only 849 such persons in the United States that share this designation out of the thousands of people that oversee and participate in elections. Haywood County is fortunate to have Mr. Inman as a top election professional and we are very proud that he works with us and has maintained and achieved this status.
Congratulations, Robbie. You here to say anything?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Do you care to say anything?
Okay. Well, again, congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to the adjustment of agenda. Does anyone have anything today? Okay. If not, we'll move to the consent agenda. We've had the opportunity to review the August 18th, 2014 regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those? Okay. We'll move to Julie Davis then, our Finance Director, with Budget Amendments. Julie?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Have a couple of budget amendments for you. The first one is for our Health and Human Services Agency. It's $3,010. This is federal funding for the WIC program and it's going to staff training.
Any questions there?
And then the next one is a library grant. This is the Library Services and Technology Act Grant. The LSTA is what it has listed here. It's $45,214 for our library.
Okay. Any questions there? Okay. Sharon is with us today. I understand that your library staff took the ALS Bucket Challenge and raised $350 recently. So congratulations. Okay. We'll move then, well, we need, first of all, is there, are there any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? If not, we entertain a motion that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Some second.
Hold on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous. We'll move to new business. We begin with the request for approval of Consolidated Waste Services Hauling Contract. David Francis and Ira Dove, attachment five.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate you letting us speak today concerning the hauling, waste and recyclables through the county. It's an honor to be up here before you all and explain things that need to be explained and enlode the recent tragedy to Mr. King. I appreciate you letting us proceed with this. Appreciate it. Want to start, just go back a little bit and start what we've been talking about for the last few months, few years in some instances. We want to make the convenience centers safer and more convenient for the folks by eliminating the step-up trailers. Those are the green trailers. Increase recycling efforts by going single stream, which I'll talk about that. Redesign the convenience centers for compactors and for better accessibility. Develop a master plan for the convenience centers to make capital improvements, to accept single stream, to be more efficient there, and to work towards eliminating the hauling that the county presently does at this time. Excuse me. Haywood County staff has been hauling the green trailers. The green trailers are located at the convenience centers and also located at 23 other sites where the school system, they pick up all those. And those house the cardboard and paper. At the school systems, they picked up aluminum cans and other things out of the kitchen that was recyclable as well there. And there's the pretty little green trailers as they are there. A rickety mess at best at times. You see the trailers, you had to step up there. We've had a couple of accidents every now and then concerning that, especially when they're wet. This was becoming an increasing liability, whether by going up the steps or hauling these down the road as they are have significant age on these trailers. Single stream recycling, as Mr. Dove talked about back in May, it's one of the goals was the county was moving to be able to, for the citizens to go and put everything in one container. Aluminum cans, plastic bottles, paper, cardboard goes into one container. This makes it easier, makes it more efficient where you're not having to go dump over here with some items than go over here. What's going to happen is, and it is happening, you know, we converted slowly in the month of July, got containers at all the 10 convenience centers where people are able just to go and place those items in one place and don't have to maneuver in front of traffic, get in the way of the trucks that are coming through there. They just have to go to the one place and dump their recyclables. And I read the single stream recycling is a process that does not require sorting and separation of materials. Homeowners and business owners no longer have to sort recyclables and can simply place all recyclable bags and bins in place in just one container at the convenience center. Just recently, there was an article in the Asheville Citizen Times that the city of Asheville had went to single stream about two years ago. They've seen a 25% increase in their recyclables since they did go single stream. I'll bet that it did have a, they did use a blue, a big blue container for curbside pickup, but it has worked, it has worked in other counties that have went single stream as well. Anywhere between a 20 to almost 50% increase in recyclables in the last few years, as Scott Mau from the Department of Natural Resources said, that 26-plus counties are moving this direction now. One of the upgrades that we talked about, the convenience center, is that you see the four containers or compactors up there. If you go from left to right, one will be trash, recyclables, trash, recyclables. So be able to pull in between those and be able to go pitch one side, pitch the other side. Be much, much more efficient. You don't have to walk around the convenience center anymore, just go there. This is the site that y'all approved for the Hazelwood Convenience Center last month. Just got a sidebar note here that the convenience center will be closing September 15th to start the upgrades. They have been working on some things where they didn't have to close the convenience center yet. So this will close on September 15th and the signage is going to go up. The attendants have handouts and we'll be working to make sure that the patrons of the Hazelwood Convenience Center site know that they can go to the Mooney Cove and Jones Cove sites, which we expanded those hours from seven to six during this construction phase. We have, hope to have all this wrapped up by October 14th. Recycling costs. Now, if the county jumped in here and decided to do the recycling cost on their own. The compactors would cost about 20,000 per unit. We'd need 14 of those units at a total cost of $280,000. And usually we amortize those over five years, which would be a $56,000 per year cost. The hauling would still have to be done by a third party or we would have to invest in that type of equipment to be able to haul those compactors. Over the next five years, the county would need to purchase four road tractors at an estimated cost of 400,000. So once we get the recyclables to the MRF, then we still have to haul those to different locations. There's two locations that we haul in Asheville, to the processing facilities. This, this past week, we had two of those tractors break down. We, on our Capital Improvement Plan, we have allotted for four tractors over the next four years that cost about 100,000 apiece. Upgrade the trailers to be able to haul this, it's $300,000. And our average hauling cost are about $150,000 a year. Our public-private partnership since 2004, Consolidated Waste Services, or CWS, has been hauling waste from convenience centers to Wadoke Landfield and recyclables to the Materials Recovery Facility in Clyde. Part of this agreement, CWS has agreed to provide compactors, trucks, drivers, and haul the waste to the Wadoke Landfield for $28,934. What this, this is, is the hauling of the waste, and I've got some other numbers here later that shows you how complex this actually gets in the end. One of the things that we found when, part of our Solid Waste Committee that we've been doing over the years, is that before this waste was being hauled and was being hauled to the MRF. Why are we doing that? Because it was being bailed and we said, why are we bailing? Wouldn't it be easier to do another way? So we had them start direct hauling the convenience center trash directly to the Wolf. There was additional cost there, but it saved the county, a cost avoidance of $400,000 when we made that change alone, eliminating the baler, going to loose field. It's one of the key things that the Solid Waste Committee has done over the last few years. CWS has agreed to pick up waste at seven county sites at a cost savings to the county of about $1,300 a month. Part of this agreement is they'll pick up the trash here, the library, and other places throughout the county. CWS has agreed to provide the compactors, trucks, drivers, and haul recyclables for $28,398 to Buncombe County. And there's a cost there of $4,000 for the direct haul there. That means it's not going to come to our tipping floor. We're not going to handle it again. It's going to be hauled directly to the Buncombe County facilities. 23 additional pickups from the schools and community college and other county facilities. We have eliminated the county from going and picking up the green trailers at the convenience centers and at the other school sites and the other various locations that the green trailers were located by this contract. Just to give you an idea of the routes to Wadoke Landfield, you can see that's a total of 285.9 miles just one way from all the convenience center sites. Just to give you an idea, Mooney Cove has 5.7 pickups a week in trash. Hazelwood, 4.3 pickups a week in trash. 110, four pickups a week. Jonathan Creek, 4.1. Beaver Dam, three. Jonathan Creek, 2.3. 209, two. And Fines Creek and Crusoe, one pickup a week, which equals to about 27 hauls a week. Three trucks, it takes three trucks, four days a week to accomplish all this, to get all the trash from the 10 convenience center sites out to Wadoke. To the Materials Recovery Centering. One-way trips there, 111.8 miles. Mooney Cove, 6.6 pickups of recyclables per week. Hazelwood, 4.3. 110, 3.0. Jonathan Creek, 2.5. Beaver Dam, 2.5. 209, 2.7. Crusoe and Fines Creek, 1.0. This is 23.6 hauls a week and it takes two trucks to accomplish this through the week. And then the pickups that you see through all the school sites, these are just once a week. And if we need to, we have more containers available to be able to put out to the schools in case the recycling increases at the schools. These are the eight-yard containers that are picked up by front-end loaders and dumped behind, we've seen those trucks a lot working through town. And this is the routes to the two recycling facilities that the county uses. Curbside Management, which is up there, close to Weaverville, and American Recycling, which is at the former INCA plant. So the county's been hauling those. It takes anywhere between one to three trips a day for the county to get the waste from here over to the recycling facilities. And that's where we use the tractors and use the other trucks. In summary, the county is able to avoid the cost of purchasing equipment of nearly $1 million, avoid the yearly maintenance and upkeep cost of $150,000, and reduce the hauling liabilities that the county has currently. The agreement fixes the cost for managing the recyclable material for the next 10 years. And CWS has a great 10-year track record with Haywood County. I've worked with Mr. Welch of that company for several years now. And any problems that we have had and arisen, he has jumped on the spot and helped us out in times of snow and clement weather. When we've changed things, he's done a superb job and I recommend that the Commissioners accept this contract.
We've, we've had several discussions about this, open the Solid Waste Committee and as Commissioners and at work sessions. It's the next step really in the path to privatizing this function formerly handled by, by the county. But it's time for discussion. Any, if you want to open up a question or comment?
The Solid Waste Committee, it was unanimous to approve this contract, right? And who's on that committee? It just, again...
Bill, myself, David, Ira, Julie, Stephen King. Anybody else?
Did you say Dale? Did you say Dale Burris?
And Dale Burris.
Those compactors, what, what's the life of them?
I'm sorry.
The life of the compactors, I mean, you know, those recyclable, I mean, I think you had a five-year or more schedule on them?
That's a, five to six years is about the life of them, period.
So you don't buy them in their last 20 or 30 years? We're going to continue to, it's a rollover deal, continue, and then of course trucks, they're, with that amount of miles, they're going to be, have to be replaced periodically.
And some would probably, you know, at Fines Creek and Crusoe would last longer than they would at other places where they're not used as, as much. But if we were to continue on our own, that would be a cost every so, every so many years the county would have to absorb.
Not only the initial cost, but a continued cost therefore.
That's right.
Isn't this the last piece of privatizing for our Solid Waste Program, do you think?
It wouldn't be the last piece. This is, this would get us pretty much out of the hauling business, which has, maybe has the most liability. I mean, I know we had one tractor or one trailer that turned over.
Yes, yes, we have had that in the past.
On Tuscaloosa Drive, which hopefully, gladly there were no students around, but...
And then in, in February, you know, also when it got down into the, when it got down into the single digits, we also had a tractor that diesel froze on I-40. Just stopped completely on I-40 as well, too. So, you know, we have an aging fleet. And, you know, it's, we're, you know, we are Robin Peter to pay Paul to keep it up and running. And it, you see, you know, we either have to, you know, go ahead and make this expense of, you know, jumping in there, you know, with new tractors and new trailers, or, you know, try to fix our costs. It's one of the things that, you know, we've always done is try to get our costs fixed in solid waste. When we got together through, you know, when we got, began looking at this, you know, the costs were, you know, accelerating out. We're trying to figure out how do we want to save money. And that's what we've tried to do through all this with the agreements with Sand Tech, fixing our costs. The agreements with, you know, CWS is fixing those costs. Because you, you know what's happening out at Francis Farm. You know, we've got something coming that we couldn't fix. We couldn't fix that cost and now it's costing us later. And so that is one of the things that we've been looking for is how do we fix the cost and make them stable throughout the years for the citizens of Haywood County. And so through the recommendations that we've worked through is, is trying to fix those costs to where we can try to flatline or they're slowly going up instead of these big jumps that are, that are going to happen with Francis Farm.
David, you say we have an aging fleet. What, what's the cost for a new tractor and trailer?
The tractors, the tractors are about $100,000 apiece for just one tractor. The trailers average anywhere depending on, if you get the walking floor or the ram, can be up in form to 75 to $100,000 for those.
And we need, how many, you think?
You need four tractors and three trailers to be... You need four tractors and three trailers to be effective.
If we're going to continue to haul, we owe it to our employees and to the public. If we're going to be hauling on a major interstate highway daily, multiple trips, we owe it to all involved to have top-notch equipment so that, you know, tragedy doesn't occur, because we know on I-40 it happens frequently, and it, it's just a rather common occurrence. So, if we're going to continue to haul and not accept this contract, then we're going to have to invest a lot of money to make sure that we have good, solid, top-of-the-line equipment.
And the lifetime of this equipment couldn't be much over five years, if that, with the amount of use and mileage?
Well, Stephen and his staff have done a great job of putting the biggest Band-Aids on this aging equipment, and we should consider ourselves lucky that, as Chairman Swanger said, that nothing worse has happened. It is, you know, it's just an aging fleet that's just tired out at this point.
So, we had a time, we got to make a decision whether to invest in new equipment or look at alternatives like we're doing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We, we don't have to put the money out there, you know, to, to invest in, in, you know, upgrading the equipment, so there's a savings. We're going to save a little bit on, not much, but a little bit on our fixed costs now, and then we're going to have some hidden savings, because you're not going to have to have insurance on these trucks and trailers and potential liability.
And we'll, we'll still have some hauling that we'll have to do.
Right.
You know, from, to take the bulky items out of the MRF to White Oak, and there's, this will eliminate a lot of trips to the facilities over in Asheville, but there'll still be some of the town's waste that we'll have to haul over there, so we're going to reduce-
You're not going to have four trucks running all the time.
Correct.
bulky waste. I mean, a big amount would probably be a load a day, maybe.
Correct, yeah.
So, you're cutting, you're cutting all that down by at least three-quarters.
And then with the towns recyclables coming in, we anticipate that'll only be a twice-a-week event going to Buncombe County at this point, and the, the trash is once a day.
Any other questions or comments? Ira, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Just briefly, we already have a contract. This is an expansion of a contract that we already have. We already have a contract that's up for renewal. We already have the waste being hauled, and this expansion includes all of the added services that Mr. Francis was mentioning regarding the recyclables, the school pickups, the additional trash pickups. So, the numbers you see primarily are covering those expansions, what we would have to pay versus the expansion cost.
And the county attorney has reviewed this contract, I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. If not, then we entertain a motion that the Consolidated Waste Services hauling contract as presented be approved.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the Community College. We have a Engineering Services request for demolition and sawmill drive improvement at the college. Brett Lanning.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. I'm here on behalf of Haywood Community College to request the following budget amendment towards demolition sawmill drive improvement project. The, the original breakdown of costs for this project were estimated costs. We're requesting $9,300 to be transferred from contingency to professional services line item. That's for some additional electrical engineering costs involved in some streetlighting and pedestrian lighting with the project. And then we're requesting $2,000 to be transferred to the construction line item for the demolition of the 700 building, which has been completed. It was 2,000 over what was estimated, so that is the basis of the requests, and we're, we are barring this adjustment. We're moving on with the project rapidly.
Is this something you normally take before your board?
Yes.
And they have approved this?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Or Brett? Barbara Parker's also here, if anyone has any questions. Dr. Parker, how are you today? Fine, thank you. Okay, any questions or comments?
This, this is just already money that's been appropriated, that's just moving it around and-
Right.
Correct.
Okay, then I guess we can approve this through the budget amendment. Julie?
You can, and he's done all my work for me. He's explained it all very well. The reason it's coming to you rather than just transfer the money around is anything that is coming from contingency needs to be approved by this board, so we are taking $9,300 from contingency to move into the engineering, so that's why it's here.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to Julie? If kept not, we entertain a motion that the budget amendment reflecting the request of $9,300 from contingency and the transfer of $2,000 to the demolition fund to reflect updated cost estimates be approved.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Carmen Rocco, our Health Director, with a request for some pricing of influenza vaccine. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you. The request before you is to approve pricing for seasonal flu vaccine, flu mist of $36, and parvivalent flu shot at $34. This will be done during a flu clinic for the community set on the 25th and 26th of September, and also following, we plan on having two school-based clinics at Pisgah High School and Waynesville Middle School. We have yet to determine those dates, but we'll publicize them once we get approval of the pricing and the logistics are worked out. We also have a request for approval for a IUD device called Skyla for $750. This is a intrauterine device that's used for women who have not had children before, and we're asking your approval for that fee as well. That's our request, and the Board of Health and Human Services approved both of these fees and recommended them to you back in June 2014 meeting.
Okay, and the influenza vaccine cost is based on Medicaid reimbursement schedule, is that right?
Right.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I just, I'm okay with the flu vaccine, but I'm not okay with the second, the IUD, so I'll be voting against the amendment because of that.
Well, we've got a second one, number five. Would you have the same vote on this? Okay, then if there's no objection, I'll move the IUD down to number five and couple it with the, with that request. Anyone have any objections to that?
Kevin's going to object to number five, too.
Yes, that's, that's condoms.
Let me ask you about that. Is this, is that, that's something that someone comes in and requests, right? I mean, obviously.
Which one are we talking about? Number five?
No, the, the, the birth control.
The Skyla.
Yeah. I mean, basically, they come in and request, and we're just setting the fee. That's the only thing we're doing, is setting the fee.
Right. We have to have the Commissioners set the fee.
Okay, like we've done in the past for any other thing?
That's correct.
Okay, if there's no other questions, then we entertain a motion that the pricing of the seasonal influenza vaccines as set forth be approved.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, the fifth item is the $50 federal funding received for communicable disease prevention program, and that is condoms. Is that right? Is that what you're talking about?
It will be used for produce of condoms.
And also, and we would entertain in this item, the fee for the long-acting birth control Skyla, previously from number four. Any questions or comments? Now, we entertain a motion that the funding for both the $50 fee and the Skyla product be approved.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Thank you, Carmen. Okay, the sixth item is a declaration for surplus property. This will be Ira Dove.
Thank you again. Would request approval of a resolution for declaration of surplus property for the donation of the structure known as the chapel at the former NCDOC site to the Haywood Christian Emergency Shelter. The original plan was that the chapel would be moved on the DOC site over and be used as part of that emergency shelter system. When they received their architectural information, they realized that it was by far the most expensive piece, not only just to move, but also to bring up the code for multi-family or for multi-person use as a residence after moving, and it would actually be cheaper for them to buy a new unit than to move that unit and upfit it. The reason that they then turned around and requested donation is they can move it somewhere that, and use it as a single-family setup or as a chapel and not have to do the same kind of upfitting that they would to make it part of that emergency shelter complex. The value on that, by the time the county moved it off the property, would not be significant, and indeed, the moving cost of it may be close to the value of it, given the age.
Okay, I understand. Any questions, Ira, on this? Comments? Okay, if not, then we'd entertain a motion that the structure known as the chapel at the Haywood County former NCDOC facility be declared surplus property for the use as described.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the following will be the closed session. We entertain a motion to enter into closed session under authority of General Statute 143-318.11A3.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session. Okay, we returned from closed session. Is there any additional business for the board? If not, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.